The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Boscher.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Excused.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner calling.
Excused.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Thank you. If you are not a member of the board, the Planning Commission Board, would you please go ahead and turn your camera off? Thank you.
Jennifer, did you call Commissioner Mayo?
You forgot me. I'm here.
I apologize, Commissioner Mayo.
I'm down in Texas, but that doesn't mean you should ignore me.
Sorry about that. I got you a presence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a forum, and both alternates will be voting tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the preceding meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was the 22nd, I believe, of September.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. I will call the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, comments were accepted electronically and via voicemail, and were delivered to the Planning Commission and posted on the public agenda packet. Chair will also, excuse me, we will call, in order, any members of the public who have chosen to comment, and that will happen during the hearing in the live meeting. The meeting tonight has two agenda items. First is consideration of item 3A, the public hearing and approval of the official development plan for expansion of Trimble's Incorporated Autonomous Vehicle Testing Area. Mr. Gurman, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Westminster Planning Commission. My name is David Gurman. I am a senior planner with the city's planning division. It is my pleasure to be presenting to you this evening. Next slide, please, Matt. Trimble Incorporated, the owner of two contiguous lots in the Westmore Technology Park subdivision, has made application to the city to approve an official development plan, or ODP, for these two properties. This approval is being requested to support the expansion of an existing autonomous vehicle testing area from the southeast corner of Trimble's developed western lot onto the southwest portion of Trimble's undeveloped eastern lot. Pursuant to section 11510B of the Westminster Municipal Code, approval of the requested expansion may not be granted administratively, but instead must come from the Planning Commission. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo is associated with attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and the public notices mailed, posted, and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. And you can see those photos and the affidavits there on your slide. Next slide, please, Matt. Here is a map of the two properties under consideration, which are outlined in red. The western lot, which is developed, is just over 19 acres in size, and the undeveloped eastern lot is about 11.4 acres. As part of this application, the intervening lot line, will be removed, creating one large lot of approximately 30.5 acres. As you can see from this photo, both lots above the south side of Westmore Drive. Next slide, please. I will now introduce the 17 standards for reviewing official development plans, which are outlined in section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Staff finds that the ODP application generally meets these standards as addressed in the agenda memo in detail. The first five ODP standards require that the ODP be in conformance with applicable codes, follows appropriate planning principles, identifies any exceptions being sought by the applicant, be harmonious with surrounding development, and that the ODP be compatible with a preliminary development plan for the site. The plan is in conformance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies, and follows the ODP approval process provided for in sections 1155A and 11510B of the Westminster Municipal Code. The plan is also in conformance with the established PDP and the comprehensive plan designation for the lots involved. The proposal exhibits sound and efficient planning and design principles by incorporating buffer areas, landscaped berms, dust, noise, and vibration mitigation, runoff and drainage control, and water quality measures, and no exceptions are requested with this application. Next slide, please. Standards 6 through 10 ensure that the project does not adversely affect and is not itself adversely affected by surrounding development. Additionally, physical attributes of any proposed buildings, including height, bulk, setbacks, materials, and architecture, are discussed. The plan mitigates any potential adverse influences that might affect the surrounding area by including buffer areas, landscape berms, dust, noise, and vibration mitigation. For example, reducing the number of vehicles being tested at once, runoff and drainage control, and water quality measures. The plan represents an expansion of an existing ancillary land use that has an established history of harmonious coexistence with private and public developments in the surrounding area. The plan proposes no new structures and provides adequate spacing and buffering from adjacent existing uses and structures. Further, the combining of the two identical lots, indicated lots, meets and exceeds all setback lot size and lot coverage requirements. Next slide, please. Standards 11 through 14 address more of the physical elements of design proposed for the project, including fencing, walls, and landscaping. Also discussed are vehicular circulation, access parking, and ensuring that hazards for vehicles and pedestrians moving within and around the site are minimized. The plan includes landscape berms, large undeveloped buffers, existing tree lines, and natural topography to mitigate undesirable views, noise, and other environmental effects that might be caused by the development. No additional lighting is proposed with the plan. Trimble will extend existing open space fencing at no cost to the city as a part of the plan. As an expansion of an existing ancillary land use, the plan has not anticipated to add any additional traffic volume to surrounding roadways. No new streets, parking areas, driveways, access points, or turning movements are proposed with the plan. Next slide, please. The final three standards focus on additional pedestrian standards, adequacy of utilities and storm facilities to serve the proposed development, and that the applicant does not have any outstanding obligations to the city. The plan does not propose activity or land uses that would generate new pedestrian traffic or movements by providing landscape berms, buffers, adverse impact mitigation, and extended open space fencing. The plan supports and protects existing pedestrian mobility. Proposed utility systems and storm drainage facilities proposed with the plan are adequate to serve the development and to protect the surrounding environment. There are no anticipated conflicts with any PDP or utility master plants, and Trimble does not have any outstanding obligations to the city. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission holds a public hearing to review the proposed ODP as we're doing tonight, and subsequently that the Planning Commission approves this application on the finding that all of the standards set forth in section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code have been properly and satisfactorily met. Next slide, please. Staff believes that this proposed ODP amendment, if approved, will facilitate an orderly expansion for Trimble, which supports the visionary leadership, effective governance, and proactive regional collaboration, and the beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city and the dynamic, diverse economy city strategic plan goals. Next slide, please. A representative of Trimble is with us tonight and has a brief presentation to share with you to outline the project. Mr. David Wells of Wellspring Incorporated is here to present to you on Trimble's behalf. I thank you for your attention this evening, commissioners, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners for Mr. Gurman?
I have a question. Hang on. Just for Mr. Gurman, just for the notice of the neighborhood meeting that went out. I live in countryside, and I never received a notice, even though I'm directly across. Could you just address how those neighborhood meeting neighborhood meeting notices went out?
Yes, sir, certainly. The first thing we usually do on a public hearing case is we try to find all property owners within 300 feet of the boundaries of the property. In this case, all the property owners within 300 feet of the boundaries of the property. And Matt, if you wouldn't mind, bring up slide. I think it's four is the vicinity map. All of those owners are within Westmore. As you can see here, there's a great deal of intervening space. The subdivision you're referring to, Mr. Carpenter, is at the bottom countryside subdivision, way more than the 300 feet. So what we did just to make sure that all of the folks that would be most likely impacted by an expansion of Trimble's operation, which would be the other, if you will, residents, the commercial residents of Westmore and Ball Campus, were notified. So we did take it upon ourselves to expand that 300 feet to include basically all owners within both the Westmore Technology Park and the Ball Campus subdivision. If you care to see it, I do have a map that shows that entire projection if you need to see it.
I don't need to see it. I was just curious how far we went out knowing that it was in an area this large. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. I can't even say it, but thank you.
No problem. I understand what you're saying. Thank you for the question, sir.
Any other commissioners that have questions? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and have the applicant make their presentation?
Hi. I'm David Wells. Can I just ask, is Todd Lyons, are you? Are you on?
Yes. I am on the call here.
Okay. Because I'm going to hand off to him when we get to some of the detailed civil things in a bit here. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission, and thanks, Dave, for that great support and summary. So I'm David Wells. I'm Trimble's local owner's rep. I've been helping them develop this property for the last 10 years or so ago. To understand our ask on this equipment test area, it's important to understand how this equipment area fits into their strategic plan. Trimble is an engineering firm, and they specialize in GPS, GPS that touches agriculture, construction, heavy highway, transportation, anything that can work off GPS. And they have lots of subsidiaries and joint ventures. Caterpillar, for instance, is a group they have a partnership with. And when Caterpillar comes out with a new piece of equipment, it's very important that they bring that to Trimble, and Trimble outfits it with GPS, and they kick the tires, so to speak, to test the software through a series of programming opportunities. And the building itself is full of engineers, but this allows them to be there firsthand to put various pieces of equipment through the paces. So they do it now on about one acre of land. You may have seen it if you've driven by. As Dave said, it's in the... In fact, maybe we could advance the slides to the site plan. I think it's the first one. There it is. So the dotted line in the right-hand side of the parcel is what we're asking to expand the test equipment area to. And currently had to have one acre. This sort of baseball diamond-shaped field is about three acres, so we're expanding by two. And just to the south, where you can see sort of an elongated shape, that's a berm that will basically hide the equipment from the walking path that borders Walnut Creek. And a little bit of the golf course, though Walnut Creek being the lowest point, and then it rises to the south for the golf course, it doesn't shield it entirely. But the plan is to continue that berm, put lots of vegetation on it, and also to... In fact, I wonder if it'd be easier if we went one more to the landscaping plan. Yeah, well, that's bigger. I guess it's probably not... There you go. You can see we've got on top of the engineering, storm drainage, civil issues, which Todd can describe in a minute. We've got this berm full of landscaping to buffer it from the south. And now that we're on this screen, if you look to the left of the parcel line that used to bifurcate the land, the long rectangular, it looks like an airport landing strip that goes north-south, that's the existing track. And so now we're asking to go out to the dotted lines in this field. The outfield of the dotted lines is approximately 250 feet from the street. And what's not shown very well on this, between the dotted line and the street, there's also an existing berm within the business park, three, four, five feet or so, depending on where you are. And then there's a sidewalk, and then it steps down to the street. Let's go to the next slide, and I'm going to ask Todd to talk about some of the civil improvements that... Do we have one more? Is there one more slide? Nope. Maybe not. Okay. Todd, can you talk it through from here?
Sure. Yeah, thanks, David, and thanks, commissioners. I think the slide we're on there is going to be just fine. From an engineering standpoint, from a civil engineering standpoint, really, since this project is a little bit different than the standard development project in the city, the main focus on this project really kind of came down to core market identity and making sure that we're treating flows off of this test area prior to those flows entering Walnut Creek down there. So we worked with the city engineering department to make sure that we've got a plan that we all think is going to be successful here. We went out on site, took a look at the existing conditions, went out on site with the city staff, and took a look at the existing conditions, utilized as much as we could there of an existing natural grass buffer that's going to provide a pretty good layer of water quality between the area that we have and the trail and the creek to the south. We have added in another measure that will help to trap sediment before it flows towards the creek off of this test area. So we have a water quality feature that will, like I said, help trap that sediment that can be maintained by Trimble to ensure long-term performance on that. From a civil standpoint, the improvements here are pretty minimal. Like has already been discussed, we're going to take a little bit of the existing material there to create the berms along the south side of the test area to help provide that visual screening that we've discussed so far. And that, along with the water quality feature, are really the bulk of the improvements that are actually being proposed with this project. So I think that's about it from a civil standpoint. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any for engineering-related items.
Any questions from commissioners? David Tomacek.
Yes.
Yes, I have two questions, both of them related to the civil engineering. And one is going to sound maybe a little off base. Can you tell me how big of vehicles you're actually going to be working with? And whether or not those berms would obstruct a runaway vehicle or anything like that?
Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, David might be able to speak to the specific vehicles. I mean, generally speaking, they could be related to civil engineering construction, roadway construction, or agriculture. As far as, you know, say, stopping a vehicle, you know, that's not necessarily what we've tried to do with these berms. It's more of that visual screening element with the landscaping and actual mounting up of the material in that area. I wouldn't necessarily be able to answer if they would or wouldn't be able to necessarily stop some of the vehicles.
Anything to add to that, Mr. Wells?
Well, just to clarify, we're not asking to build a racetrack where heavy equipment's going to be testing its speed constraints going around an oval. These are, generally speaking, the same kind of equipment that's out there now. Backhoes, graders, things that they can they can program, and it would go out and dig a four-foot hole or grade two feet of dirt or whatever. It's really you know, I think it's a really good question. We started out, I was wondering that same thing, like, I was wondering just how many pieces of equipment would be there? Is it going to look like a parking lot? And I'm assured it's just basically what's there with a few more pieces of equipment. The idea is not to stockpile. They have another site in Broome Field, and they sort of circulate equipment when they work on it and they program it, they bring it in on the bed of a truck, and then they do their thing, and then they take it back, and they sort of circulate these. So I'm not anticipating anything different than what they're doing right now, but I think it's a really good question.
And then the other one has to do with the potential of washing out the trail to the south there. Has that been taken into consideration with all the landscaping and flow work that you've been doing?
Yeah, absolutely. I can answer that one maybe a little bit more clearly for you. So the stormwater that is coming out of this site, we've got some smaller areas, lower areas between the berms to allow stormwater through, where it'll flow to the south there. And then what we have included is a level spreader that runs essentially the length of the test area. And what that will do is when stormwater flows off this site, it'll fill up this depression on the high side, on the north side of this level spreader. And the level spreader will allow the flow to spread out evenly across that area. So we're not really, we won't create any point discharges that would increase any potential for erosion at the trail itself. So one of our major goals here was to spread out that flow so that we reduce any potential for erosion. It should be as close as you could really get to mimicking the existing condition out there is our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? It looks like we have no further questions. Is there any further presentation?
Not on our end.
Okay. Mr. Gurman, did you have any final presentations, or are you finished as well?
I'm all complete with my presentation, sir, but if there's any questions you have, we can certainly attempt to answer them.
In that case, Jennifer, do we have any public testimony we need to address?
There is no public testimony and no voicemails to be played into the meeting.
Very good, thank you. In that case, we will not have a public hearing. But we will ask commissioners if they have any further questions. Seeing no further questions, I will entertain a motion on this item. Don't be bashful. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Planning Commission approve the second amended official development plan for the six-three plat of Westmore Technology Park subdivision to allow Trimble to expand its autonomous vehicle testing area. This is based on the finding that the proposed plan meets all seventeen criteria for the review found in Westminster Municipal Code fifteen-five-fifteen-A.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Mayo?
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Do we have any discussion? Jennifer, I have a question. Do you want a roll call or a voice vote on this?
We will do a roll call vote, please.
Very good. Seeing that no one has any questions or discussion, I will call the question. Go ahead and give us a roll call.
Commissioner Boschert.
Aye.
Commissioner Boschert is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Aye.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang?
Aye.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres is in favor. Thank you.
Well, the motion passes unanimously, and I believe we can move on to the next applicant unless we have further questions.
Chairman Boschert, this is Mr. Gurman. This is Mr. Gurman. I just wanted to say thank you to our applicant, Mr. Wells, and to
Thank you.
And we appreciate your time this evening, planning commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to sign off unless anything else for me.
Yeah, that's just letting you know.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank staff and applicants for a good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Next item of consideration is item three B. Consideration of an amendment to the Westminster Municipal Code, chapter, title eleven, chapter eleven, signed code is proposed to be continued to November tenth of twenty twenty at a seven PM virtual meeting. I need a motion to that effect and a second. Commissioner Mayo?
I move that agenda item three B, consideration of an amendment to the Westminster Municipal Code, title eleven, chapter eleven, signed code, be continued to November tenth, twenty twenty at seven PM in a virtual meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Tomacek and Mr. Dunn. Okay, any discussion? I guess we don't need any discussion on this. Let's go ahead and call the question. All in favor? Do you want a roll call vote, Jennifer?
Yes, please, roll call vote.
Very good.
Commissioner, excuse me, Chairperson Boschert?
Aye.
Chairperson Boschert is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek?
Aye.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Zhang?
Aye.
Commissioner Zhang is in favor. Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres is in favor. Thank you.
So it is unanimously agreed that the item three B will be continued to November tenth, twenty twenty. Do we have any old business we need to attend to? Jennifer, do you have a firm date for when our next meeting will be?
We do. We will have a meeting on October the twenty-seventh, two weeks from today.
Very good, thank you. If there is no other items and no discussion, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, and thank you, Jennifer and Matt, for a great meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of your evening. Good night.